Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees Meeting for August 31st, 2016. As is our usual practice, we will begin first with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's moment of silence is dedicated to all veterans in appreciation for their service. So if we can have that moment now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. We'll begin with motions for consideration. Mr. Looby.
Motion 2016-141, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting held on August 10th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-141 to approve the minutes from August 10th, 2016.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-142, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' special meeting held on August 15th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-142 to approve the minutes from August 15th, 2016.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Trustee Sturz was not at that meeting, and so therefore she did not second the motion. Okay.
Motion 2016-143, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016-143 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-144, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending August 16th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-144 to approve payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-145, accept the resignation of Joshua A. Volkerding, part-time firefighter, paramedic in the fire department, effective September 3rd, 2016.
I move motion 2016-145 to accept the resignation of Joshua A. Volkerding.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-146, accept the resignation of Jason P. Krupp, part-time firefighter, paramedic in the fire department, effective September 5th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-146 to accept the resignation of Jason P. Krupp.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-147, accept the resignation of Derek M. Hammond, part-time firefighter, paramedic in the fire department, effective September 8th, 2016.
I've moved motion 2016-147 to accept the resignation of Derek M. Hammond.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-148, accept the resignation of Adam R. Sadler, part-time firefighter, paramedic in the fire department, effective September 7th, 2016.
I've moved motion 2016-148 to accept the resignation of Adam R. Sadler.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-149, authorize a fiscal officer to sign the Ohio Division of Liquor Control Form, do not request a hearing due to change in corporate stock ownership at Farm Inc. at 239 Anderson Ferry Road in Picnic Area in Delhi Township.
I've moved motion 2016-149 to authorize the fiscal officer to sign the Ohio Division of Liquor Control Form.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Continuing on for presentations this evening, we have our Director of Parks, Josh Torbeck.
Thank you, trustees. Before I start, I wanted everybody to know that this presentation will be put up on our website, social media, so it will be accessible for everybody. I'm going to go through the details a little quick, just because it'll be up there for everybody to see, so I'll go through the first couple of slides pretty quickly. Our Parks and Recreation Department manages about 150 acres of parkland. It is about nine different properties, various different sizes and shapes. Other properties that we maintain, mow the grass, you can see listed there, other township buildings, right-of-ways, collaborative effort, all this is done, we are reimbursed by the general fund. Who we are, we are comprised of five full-time employees, including myself, two part-time, year-round employees, nine seasonal employees, our custodians who work our events that are lodge and community center, and of course, last year we had about 40 volunteers who donated about 850 hours of their time. Lot of events and programs going on at our parks, I'm not going to go through all of them, but plenty of events that are lodge and senior center, of course, our youth organizations playing ball, whether it's football, soccer, baseball, or softball, our summer camps, our garden tours, a lot going on, but I think there's room for more. The facilities we take care of, Glen Carter Lodge, Community Center, baseball fields, softball fields, soccer fields, shelters, spray grounds, tennis courts, playgrounds, skate park, lots of walking trails, you get the idea, there's a lot that we take care of, a lot of amenities. One of our hidden gems is our Floral Paradise Gardens, and you heard me speak about our volunteers before. Most of our volunteer hours take place in Floral Paradise Gardens. It's a treasure, and we couldn't do without them. The next two slides I'll kind of combine together are our two reservable facilities, our community center, home to our Delhi senior group that we work very closely with, and of course, our Glen Carter Lodge. Each place hosts many different events, whether it's weddings, birthday parties, showers. We're really proud of both facilities. So when I first got here, the board and Pete kind of put me to task to figure out what I could do to save the Parks Department money, what I could do to eliminate any extra spending or anything we could do. Right here you'll see a list of everything that we've done in two years, and it's been pretty effective, whether it's changing staff scheduling, or making changes to staff, conservation areas, making more energy-efficient decisions with LED. We've made a lot of changes, no changes too small, no detail was too small, we did everything we could in order to save the Park Department money. So here's probably the most exciting part, getting down to the numbers of why a park levy is needed. The Park Department passed its last levy in 2005, it was projected last five years, it's on year 11. Since 2005, new park properties and non-park properties have been added to the park maintenance responsibilities. In 2013, the senior center, community center, the operations were moved to the Parks Department. In 2014, the expenses transitioned to the Parks Department. In 2013, shared services were introduced, and it was an added expense to the Park Department along with other departments as well. In order for the Parks Department to maintain our operations, we've been subsidized by the general fund. That number is approaching about $200,000 a year. The big issue with this is the fact that because of state cuts, the general fund can no longer sustain the subsidy for the Parks Department. I think that's the key part of this levy, is the fact that this isn't sustainable year after year. So park levy facts, 0.54 millage, which would provide additional $240,000 a year to the Parks Department. I think the next one's a key number. The annual cost per 100,000 home would only be $18.90. It's not a lot. It's a five-year levy, and it's important to realize this is an operational levy, this is not for capital improvements. Capital improvements will still be done through TIF, and when we speak of capital improvements, we're talking about roads, buildings, improvements of that nature, those playgrounds or things like this. This is just an operational levy. So in addition to being, getting, you know, out of the general fund as far as being subsidized, what else would the park levy provide? I think we've, among ourselves, within the department and heard the community, one of the things they'd like to see is our parks to be as secure and as safe as possible. And the first thing you see on there is the Park Resource Officer. This would be a collaborative effort between the Parks Department and the Delhi Township Police Department, providing a uniformed officer in the park about eight months a year, seven days a week, to offer anything from customer service to more safety, security. I mean, when I envision this position, I envision someone tossing football, you know, with the kids, and then at the, you know, the next day, he's helping to give directions or offer advice on where to go. This is somebody who would really be within the community, a face that people would come to get to know. The solution is, it saves the parks a ton of money moving in this direction. If we were to ask for this detail without the solution, it would cost about $30,000 more than this actual solution. The second thing we kind of pointed out as a need within the parks is more activities, programming, and events. We got a taste of that this year with the Bicentennial Events, you know, people love coming out to the park. This gives us the ability to give them more reasons to come out to the park, to offer more staff in order for us to provide concerts, movie nights, festivals, events, programming. This gives us the ability to hire the staff in the evenings to give someone around, have someone around to help with these certain events. The next one you'll see on there is increased assistance to Delhi seniors and help offset facility costs. Right now, we have a great senior group with a great leader, Burke Brothers. We don't know what the future holds, but right now we're in no condition to take over if she were ever to step down and no one was able to step up. This gives us the ability to put someone in position to take over, to help programs, help run the facility. This kind of secures the future for the seniors and the senior center. Without this, we wouldn't have anybody, we wouldn't be able to staff that and have someone step in if need be. And of course, the last point was, what I've talked about, is getting out of that subsidy from the general fund, which truthfully is not sustainable. Any questions from the trustees?
Trustee Oswald.
Yes, just to clarify, in that Park Resource Officer, I mean, we've used several terms, whether it's a park ranger, but ultimately it's going to be a sworn officer from the police department, correct?
Yes.
He's going to have arrest power, and is he going to have the same uniform as Delhi Police or a different uniform while he's?
Same uniform. There's probably some small details, but as far as something as a uniform, it'd be the same.
Okay. So he reports to our police department, but it'll be under the parks budget?
It would be collaborative effort between the two departments. We'd pay about $40,000 of it, and the police would pay whatever left in the benefits. The other months of the year that he's not in the parks, that person would be out in the community, patrolling, whether it's the business district, you know, with economic redevelopment, anything that may go on. Not only will we have extra safety and security in the park, but we're talking about extra safety and security in the community as well.
Right, and when you describe them, you know, playing catch or whatever, I mean, that's a rosy picture, but ultimately, there's a lot of vandalism. He's going to be looking for that, more safety.
Well, hopefully, yes. We have someone there to take care of that issue if it arises, but hopefully, you know, with his added presence, it stops before it even begins.
Right. Okay.
Trustee Sturz.
I don't have a question, but just for the public, can you please explain how the paving and everything, and who paid for that? Because some people are saying, why do we need a levy if we just spent all this money? Please.
Well, the levy's strictly operational, and the pavement, beautiful, is done through our TIF funds. That's two totally separate funds, they aren't related, other than, you know, they're both township funds, I'm not, Pete wants to talk, I can tell by the...
Well, just to clarify, the TIF funds is what we are using to build the new firehouse with. It's what we use to replace our police cars, it's what we use to put on a new roof, it's what we use to pave the roads. That is what the TIF fund can be used for. It cannot be, it cannot pay for $1 of salary or benefits, nothing. So, and it can't really go for everyday, day-to-day operational stuff either. So that when we say that, you know, the paving project purely, you know, was TIF-funded, you know, there's no way the park funds could have even paid for that to begin with, since they're already, you know, into the general fund by almost 200,000. So, so yes, this is not to do those kind, now, it's not to say that this fund that they can't use to help buy more mulch and help buy a little more planting beds and small, I wouldn't even call those capital items, those are still really maintenance items, but no, it would not be, this levy would not be used to do major capital projects such as paving.
Thank you.
I think the one concern everyone has expressed to me about the park has to do with security, and it's not particularly that security now in the park is poor or bad. We have had some pretty nasty incidents, that's for sure, but if you take a look around our community and our communities that border us, we're kind of protecting ourselves for what not only is, but more of what could be. So, the Park Resource Officer, if, for those of you who are familiar with a school resource officer, if you see them around in the schools, it's a joint cooperation between that, between the school district and the police department. The Park Resource Officer will be that same type of joint arrangement between the Parks Department and the police department. So during the time of winter, when we don't really have a need in the park, we will have an extra set of boots on the street in Delhi, which is something that, you know, we've looked at many times for funding. So the ability to put a real officer that's sworn and armed in our park is a good way to protect our future in those parks. Now, we talked about the fact that the parks is borrowing from the general fund, we're subsidizing the parks. We're very fortunate in Delhi because our police department and our fire department stand alone in their expenses based on their levy money. But you know, and you're kind of accustomed to the fact that this comes up every five years, and we take a look at the finances and we determine the need going forward. The parks has not had a levy renewal of any kind, additional funding, since 2005. Now, since that time, and I think, Josh, you pointed out, the number of acres that we've added to the responsibility of the parks, including the senior center. So that's kind of where we are, because the general fund is no longer receiving the type of revenue that it did two years ago, a year ago, it keeps going down. So if our income, so to speak, keeps going down, but yet we have to try to let the parks be subsidized from that fund, it's going to get tighter and tighter. So, giving Josh all the credit for the fact that he has worked the parks and the finances along with the Fab members, and really has drilled down this number, so that what we are presenting is bottom-line operational. There is no Taj Mahal in the plans. It is purely keeping our parks the way you like them to be. And part of the parks is always, we want to deal with not only the totlots and the kids and the programs for the kids, but we also have our seniors, and we want to provide them the best events, the best facility that we can, and they are under the Parks Department as well. So, thank you, Josh. I think we have one citizen's comment tonight regarding the park levy. Russ Brozi, if you'd like to come up now. We have done this before on a citizen's comment that is really relative to a presentation. We'll take it right away so that we can kind of all keep our minds on the park.
Oh, thank you. And I want to congratulate Josh, he is great to work with. We worked on the senior center, did for things, and he's just a great guy. He would, he helps us a lot.
Thank you.
I am for this park levy. It is great. It helps everyone, kids, children, grandparents, grandkids, everybody gets help in this levy. So nobody gets left out, even the seniors get help. You're going to have better activities in the park, you're going to have an officer in the park, you're going to have ballgames in the park where people can sit and watch the game, you're going to have grandparents going there, so this helps everybody. The biggest thing is, we need money to put the levy through. And told Josh that we will help raise money, we need money for signs and for other stuff in the parks to pass this levy, and like you said, the levy's only $18.90 a year per 100,000. No one pays that tax yearly, do you? You pay every six months, so now it's only $9. Nine dollars, six months, that's what, two Bud Lights? So, you get your parks paid for. It's $29 every six months. So this is a great deal. I'm 100%, seniors are behind this, everybody's behind this. But if you want to make donations to the park levy, call me at my office, it's 347-9433. We'd be glad to take the donations to help pay for everything that we need for the parks. This is a great, great deal, so make sure that you get interested in this. If you need signs in the yard, let us know. Also, if you need the help on the levy, we need to pass our door handles and everything else. So we got to push because we only got 61 days left.
Okay.
So, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Russ. Are you going to have maybe a volunteer meeting or something that you can keep us up on?
Yes, we have, we're meeting next Wednesday, where we'll talk about details such as that, and we'll get that out to everybody.
All right, and how about social media?
We're going to start hitting everything very hard with social media and getting the word out. I would say in the next week or so, you'll really start to see us hit everything very hard as far as...
So when we see that come through, make sure that all of us share with our friends the information about the park levy. That'd be great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Correspondents, trustee Oswald.
Just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the board for the Dog Days with the Delhi Business Association did. Great turnout, unfortunately, there's a storm that hit between 2:00 and 4:00, scared some people, but everyone came back for the concert. Concert was great. I think it really shows that this community would support and certainly respond to some sort of summer concert series, I mean, that's three we've had now, we've had a good attendance at every one. I know Kwanis did the Beer Booth, they informed me that they were selling beer until 10:15, you know, pretty constant, from 7:00 till 10:15, so it shows people enjoyed it. Big thank you to the DBA, they did a great job, great venue, very good setup, and obviously Parks and Josh helped out with a lot of that, too. Also, senior auction, I think it was a successful auction.
It was successful, only $11,000.
That's what I saw from Vicky, so yeah, $11,000. And obviously, both of these things tie back to the park levy. Obviously, if the park levy passes, we could do another summer concert series next year. Keep in mind, the events this year were only for the Bicentennial. If the park levy would fail, we would have to reassess that and see if that's even feasible if we have the money to do something like that. And certainly, the seniors, they had to do the auction to raise money because we're forced to charge them rent because the budget's so tight. If the park levy passes, obviously, their rent would be covered. So again, this park levy directly affects the events we saw this weekend, they were very successful, and if you wanted to continue, then you want to certainly encourage people. So, thank you to DBA, thank you for the seniors.
Okay. Trustee Sturz.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Jepron, we received a letter thanking him for helping an elderly woman in whose car broke down, she needed to get to the doctors, he went above and beyond helping her out. So we're very proud of him, we're proud of all of our employees, we're just another example of what good people we have, and who would go out of his way to take care of somebody, and he was very, very meek about it, they even had it on television, and still, he was very meek. But again, we want to thank Lieutenant Jepron for representing Delhi so well.
All right, and trustee correspondence from me, I'll begin with a response to Mr. Bob Gruen, if maybe you saw his letter to the editor in the Delhi Press. He had some concerns regarding the fire station, and one of his concerns was school backup traffic, and when I spoke to Mr. Gruen, I said, "Well, guess what? Rapid Run Station is next to Rapid Run Middle School, we have the same issue there, and the Nebe Road Station gets backed up with C.O. Harrison." So we're quite familiar with school backup traffic with a fire station. He was also concerned about two-lane traffic. Well, the other houses are also on two-lane roads. So, his last concern was the traffic signal at Greenwell and Delhi Pike. We have already been in contact with traffic engineers about that light, and about how we will re-engineer it when we actually have the emergency vehicles using that route. So I thought, well, if he had these concerns, maybe there's concerns out there from others as well, so hopefully that helps to address those. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Oak Hills High School on the opening of the new auditorium, and thank them for the nice invitation to include our board there for their ribbon cutting. And last, but not least, I'd like to congratulate trustee Sturz for her recent appointment to the Elderly Services Program Advisory Council. She has been appointed by the Hamilton County Commissioners, and we're very proud to have a Delhi Township trustee represented there, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, report from fiscal officer.
Today, we have Pete Feitner from the Fab Board to discuss the mid-year reviews.
Mr. Feitner.
Good evening. At our last meeting, the Fab Board asked that I present to the trustees and anyone else who happens to be watching on the media, what is going on with the Financial Advisory Board. We have reviewed all of the financials for the Delhi Township Departments through June 30th. We followed our customary review procedures, some of you're familiar with. Two or three members of the Fab Board meet with each department head and with either Jim and/or Pete in a sit-down session and review this first six months versus the budget itself, which the trustees have said, "This is what you're allowed to spend, and this is what we hope you take in." So we compare to that and look for anything that's unusual or different. In that process, we did have a number of questions, as usual. The bulk of those were answered immediately at the meeting, those that weren't were answered the next day type of thing. And as usual, all our questions were probably 99% timing differences. This is where somebody says, "We're going to buy something," you think it's going to be bought in the first six months, they're going to buy it in July, which puts them to the second six. So all the, all the timing differences were out there, as usual. There weren't no items that we came across that caused any concern, and all the financials look like, especially with the timing differences, by the end of the year, everything is going to work out fine. So the Fab Board wanted to report that as of our review, everything appears to be fiscally responsible in Delhi Township.
Wow, thank you, Pete. Thank you to the entire Fab, and I know I say that frequently, but I can't say it enough because you are our, what, seven sets of eyes to review these numbers and sit down with these department heads, and it has really made a difference, especially at budget time, so thank you again. Did you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, we have no need for public hearing or reports from departments, so we'll begin now with the reading of resolutions. Mr. Looby.
Resolution 2016-168, resolution approving purchase order obligations incurred on behalf of the Township by the Township Administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturz?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-169, resolution authorizing the Township Administrator to execute and submit necessary documentation in connection with the filing of the required renewal certification application as an electric governmental aggregator, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum?
This follows suits, just like what we did with gas, and this is our electric aggregation program. We have to be certified by the Public Utilities Commission, so this authorizes me to fill out the appropriate paperwork to get it filed.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturz?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-170, resolution adding position of police recruit and eliminating the position of Community and Economic Development Manager in Article 12 of the Delhi Township amended and restated summary of policies dated January 1st, 2014, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? I believe we have our HR manager, Lisa.
Hi, thank you, trustees. This is, the police recruiter is an opportunity for us to have an entry-level position before our police officer position, that they can grow into that if we come across a candidate that we think is worthy of that. And the Economic Development Manager position, that was actually, we're eliminating that because our Community Development Manager, our director that we hired back in March of this year, is taking over that role.
Okay. All right.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense... All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-one. Resolution setting staffing levels and establishing pay rates during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Lisa?
Yeah, this is just in conjunction with the prior resolution. It just eliminates the position and adds the position to our staffing levels.
Okay.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-two. Resolution authorizing implementation of the Delhi Township Wellness Program, authorizing the Human Resource Manager to execute and submit all required participation documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Lisa.
Yeah, we, last, uh, meeting, we passed a resolution to accept the BWC Wellness Grant that we were awarded. So, this is just a program outline of who's eligible, what activities we're offering, things like that.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-three. Resolution certifying to the county auditor final unpaid assessment amounts against abutting property owners for the construction, repair, and maintenance of sidewalk and driveway apron improvements along various township streets ordered in accordance with Revised Code fifty-five, four-three-point-one-zero and its policy and procedures, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? I believe we have our Director of Public Works, Ron Ripperter.
Thank you, trustees. This is to wrap up the two thousand fifteen sidewalk assessment program. Um, half the people have already paid and we got about another seventy-five to send to the Hamilton County Auditor for assessment, and that'll finish that off.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-four. Resolution authorizing application for grant funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission to assist in a cost to repair Foley and Rockwell Roads and Hillside Avenue, and authorizing Delhi Township Administrator to execute any required documents in connection with the grant applications, appoint officers, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Ron?
Thank you. This is a, kind of a joint venture with Hamilton County Engineers to help improve the township roads. Um, we are talking about maintained county roads, so, as he said, it's a first priority for Foley. That's probably one of the top, um, complaint on streets lately. So, uh, it's at no cost to the township. It's just more hel- helping them for points for the funding.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-five. Resolution imposing a moratorium of one year on the issuance and processing of any permits allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of medical marijuana within Delhi Township, Ohio, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? I think we're gonna be double teamed. Mr. Pete Landrum and Dave Lane are law director.
Well, I'm gonna speak for Dave. Dave's voice is kinda gone, so he wrote it out for me. So, um, basically, uh, Ohio legalized marijuana, you know, is effective September eighth, uh, two thousand sixteen. However, the law requires that the Department of Commerce and the Board of Pharmacy to adopt regulations over the next twelve to twenty-four months. The program must be operational by September two thousand eighteen. The law authorizes townships to limit or prohibit cultivators, processors, and retail dispens- uh, dispensaries. Boy, that's, yeah, dispensaries. I can't even say it. However, until the rules and regulations are adopted, it is too soon for the township to, to make decisions of whether to regulate or not this issue. Uh, this twelve-month moratorium will simply provide staff time to review the rules and regulations as they become available in order to make informed recommendations. Um, I kinda had been watching many of the other jurisdictions around us, uh, north of us, south of us, east, you know, well, can't be south of us, but, you know, everywhere around us, uh, has been doing this. I think it's a wise decision on our part, uh, to consider this until we can get, you know, the, the state of Ohio can get the rules and regulations and we can then make decided, you know, intelligent decisions, uh, the board can on what to do, how to move forward. Um, I don't want the township, and I think that's what the, the board would desire, that we don't want the township to become a test case and that we have no rules or nothing to stop anybody and then we're kinda caught off our, the heels, so to speak, um, on not knowing what to do all of a sudden. So, this simply gives us time, uh, to see what the state's going to, how, you know, it's, it's one thing to have the ru- uh, the, uh, law, but then it's the other thing is how do the rules and regulations of the law, you know, how, how are those interpreted? So, we need, this just simply gives us time to look at those, that information, and to be, make, uh, intelligent decision based on that for future.
Okay.
And I just wanna be clear, the township, we are not saying yea or nay. We are just buying more time. So, we're not for it, we're not against it. We're just waiting to see how this gets implemented, how the law is perceived before we jump into something that hasn't even been implemented yet and then run into a lot of problems.
That, that's correct, yes. We're not, at this point, your board's not saying you can do it here or, or not. Um, you're just saying.
Pause.
We're not, yeah, it's on pause, if you wanna think of it that way. Ultimately, we're not going to say anything about whether medical marijuana is illegal. It will be legal in the state of Ohio, as it is in twenty-five other states currently. Um, it's a question of whether or not we would impose regulations on where you can grow it, process it, and sell it. Those are the three components. The, um, the, the bill or the statute already authorizes townships and, I think municipalities to, um, to, to regulate or prohibit, um, the sale, cultivation, or processing within their jurisdiction. The law does already have certain requirements built into it, like distance, you can have a dispensary, for instance, within five hundred feet of a school or something like that. So, bottom line, it's simply too new. The rules are not written. Your board, none of us can know if this is a, a good thing or a bad thing, um, or a neutral thing. Uh, as we were talking before the meeting, um, there are far, far stronger and probably more dangerous drugs that are sold every day in every community around the state than, than the way that this medical marijuana bill is written and, and the restrictions. There's only twenty conditions that it can even be used for, so it's gonna be highly, highly, highly regulated.
And when you say regulated, it's gonna be state-regulated and then it gives the option to townships to further regulate, but we're not getting in the marijuana business and the state's gonna regulate it even heavier than liquor.
Totally, totally going to be regulated by the state.
Right.
The only thing that local governments are going to be able to do is where and maybe how. It's, it's legal unless you prohibit it. It's going to be legal anyway. Um, but if you prohibit it in your community, then they won't be able to do whatever you're prohibiting, or if you regulate it. So, it's kinda like a zoning issue more that it trickles down to at the local level.
Thank you.
Now, we're, yes, we're, we're already putting a one-year more, uh, moratorium on it, but did I hear you say it's gonna be two years before they're gonna have everything? And what's gonna happen that second year?
Twelve to twenty-four months.
Right.
It is.
So, do we revisit it in a year?
Yes.
Okay.
We really don't know how long it's going to take, um, in an effort to not, um, I guess, over-regulate, um, with, with the moratorium. Uh, twelve months seem to be a reasonable time to do it. Actually, a twelve-month moratorium is a long moratorium. It's not something that I would generally, um, recommend or support because you're taking away rights. Um, here, they're kinda conditional rights because the state hasn't finished doing its job yet.
Okay.
And it was intended, uh, by the, the legislature. Um, they passed the, the guts of it. I mean, the bill's eighty pages long, um, but now, you'll get probably five thousand pages of regulations, so.
So, until the state finishes the rules and the regulations by putting on the moratorium, we've done exactly what you said, hit the pause button, and this protects us in the meantime.
We're not saying you can or can't, or there's restrictions. We're saying, "We don't know. We'll wait and see and let you know."
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-six. Resolution authorizing an agreement with Forgotten Paul's Animal Rescue for a dog walk at Delhi Park on October second, two thousand sixteen, authorizing the park director to execute the agreement and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Josh Torbeck?
Uh, one of the positive side effects of having a lot of events in the park this year is more organizations wanna hold their events here. Uh, so Forgotten Paul's approached me. It's their eighth annual walk, first time at Delhi Park. We're happy to have them. Uh, it's gonna be October second from eight to noon, start at Floral Paradise Gardens, walk down Greenwell to Foley, back in through Clear, uh, Clearview Lake and, and, uh, make our way back to Floral Paradise Gardens. So, it should be a good day. Um, we're excited to be a partner with them.
There were great dogs in, in the park Saturday.
They're, they're expecting about two hundred.
Wow, okay.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Two thousand, Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-seven. Resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute the quote from Hastings Air Energy Control, Inc., "For the vehicle exhaust system to be installed at the new Green, Greenwell Fire Station," and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Landrum?
Yes, this is one of the things that we knew would, was not included in the contract for the, with Turner, uh, for the new Greenwell Fire Station. Uh, this is the exhaust system that's connected to the vehicles while they're in the bay, so you're not, um, it's not polluting the inside of the bay area. Um, this, uh, is a little early. This probably won't even happen until January or February, but this ensures us the contract price, disagreed price, which was, uh, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars, um, to lock us in on that price, and of course, this is, uh, through the TIF funds.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-eight. Resolution declaring nuisance for accumulated debris at thirty-nine seventy-two Delhi Pike and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber?
Thank you. Uh, in response to a complaint, we inspected the property, finding the current condi- or the conditions that you see displayed there, issuing an informal order. Uh, those orders have not been complied with during an inspection of the property again today. Those conditions persist, and for that reason, we're requesting you declare the property a nuisance so we can address it through our nuisance abatement procedure.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution two thousand sixteen, one seventy-nine. Resolution providing for the removal of a junk motor vehicle at forty-two forty-nine Skylark Drive and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. Stahlhaber?
Thank you. Uh, in response to a complaint, we inspected, uh, this property, finding those conditions. We had it as a wrecked automobile, and in discussions with the property owner, she has confirmed that is not an operational motor vehicle and told us it was her intent to sell that. Uh, we gave a little legal room for that to occur. Nothing has happened. Uh, for that reason, we, well, informal orders was issued. We extended the deadlines a little bit to, uh, afford for the sale of the car to no avail. Uh, inspection today is still there, and for that reason, we're requesting you, uh, proceed with according to property a nuisance so we can address it through our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts? Resolution 2016-180, resolution providing for the removal of a junk motor vehicle at 6525 Simon Drive and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber?
Thank you. In response to a complaint, we saw the conditions that are presented there, issuing an informal order. We did get a call from the owner of the property indicating that he was waiting on parts to be delivered to finish repairs of that vehicle. That was almost a month ago. No further correspondence or contact with him. Inspection today, the violation persists. For that reason, we're requesting you declare the property a nuisance so we can address it through our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-181, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 4362 St. Dominic Drive and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. Stahlhaber?
In response to a complaint, we observed not only the conditions you see, but actually the front yard was in excess of 12 inches in height as well. We issued an informal order, the front yard effectively has been cut, the backyard has been ignored, and those conditions persist today, and for that reason, we're requesting you declare the property a nuisance so we can address it through the nuisance abatement procedures.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-182, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 489 Wilkie Drive and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber?
Again, in response to a complaint, we investigated this property, finding the conditions that you see there, and they're actually worse than you see there. Issuing an informal order, there has been some effort taken to address the violations there. Most of the grass has been cut, but some portion of the backyard, as well as the driveway, which actually works, looks worse than what it does today, or in that photograph, persist. So even though there's been some effort to take, this taken care of, the deadline has passed for them to take the rest of it, have the rest of it taken care of, we've received no further response from the people. We have talked with these people. But the property, in essence, is still in violation today. It's the same condition as you see there. And again, despite the efforts having been taken to bring it into partial compliance, we're recommending that you proceed with having the property declared a nuisance so we can address it through the nuisance abatement procedures.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-183, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 4845 Mount Alverna Road and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And the discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber?
Thank you. In response to a complaint, we saw the conditions that you see there. This is primarily in the back, in the side yards of the subject property. Try the evidence, the neighbors are taking care of the front yard. The front yard's in pretty good shape, not unlike the rest of the neighborhood. We did issue an informal order to no avail. Inspection today, the conditions persist, so we're requesting you declare it a nuisance. We'll address it through the nuisance abatement procedures.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-184, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 629 Neeb Road and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber?
In response to a complaint, we saw the conditions, or we observed the conditions that you see presented there, and it's also the case in the backyard, that's the front yard. We did issue an informal order to no avail during follow-up inspections, including today. Those violation conditions persist, and for that reason, we're requesting you declare the property a nuisance so that we can address it through the nuisance abatement procedures.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-185, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 3954 Delhi Pike and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber?
Thank you. In response to a complaint, we inspected this property, finding the conditions that you see there. That's actually the backyard. Oddly enough, the front yard is maintained. The backyard's a hill. We did issue an informal order to no avail during follow-up inspections, including today. Those conditions persist, and for that reason, we're requesting you declare the property a nuisance so we can address it through the nuisance abatement procedures.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-186, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 4426 Delhi Pike and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber?
Yes, in response to a complaint, we observed the conditions that you see there, and that is all the yards, not just the front yard that are in that condition. We did issue an informal order to no avail during follow-up inspections, including today. Those conditions persist. For that reason, we're requesting the property declared a nuisance so we can address it through the nuisance abatement procedure. Also, we did abate this property last year.
We did.
Yes.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with a second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes. That concludes the resolutions for this evening. We're on to citizens' comments. Let me remind everyone, if you've signed in, you have a five-minute you have a five-minute time here. Jeff Lefler? You're on.
Well, I have probably some good news. I think it's good news, but I'm going to warn you guys what's coming forward. We had 60 new veteran names for this year. That's going to leave us only 26 names left for the Wall of Honor. So we are going to need a new wall, a Wall 7. The Wall 7 will be, costs us about $15,000. So what we want to do is start the buzz now, so there's nothing formal you have to do. We just want to tell the township, this is what's coming, because it is going to, the installation of the Wall 7 is going to cause some mess up there, so when we do schedule it, heavy equipment, so we're going to be working with your departments to coordinate all this up. I contacted Shop Monument and Jeffrey Allen as far as installing it. We haven't heard, I haven't heard back from them yet, but but that should be happening next year, and we want it up by next Veterans Day, so we can add names to the wall. And I just have some fun facts. We have 2,308 names on the wall. Each wall holds 424 names, except for Wall 1, which only holds 212. Since the dedication, on a yearly average, we've had 230 names. Now, the largest names that we've had for the inauguration is the first year, where we had 1,482. Since then, it's been 82 names for each year. If you take the cost of those, just those names of 2,308, that's $76,100. If you take all seven walls and you do the math, it would be $91,000 that has been invested in just the names. Now, if you take the seven walls, that's another $105,000. So, and every conflict is represented there by a veteran from the American Revolution to to present, as far as we have a Confederate, might have two Confederates up on the wall. We have a lot of, about 44 Sisters of Charity Army nurses. So every war is War of 1812. We have one, I think, maybe two, and all of them are Bosnia, Cuban crisis, all of them. So this Wall of Honor is Delhi's heritage, what we contributed to our country. So it's a very historical piece, so we want to keep it going. The thing of it is, like I said, it's going to cost $15,000. It's going to drain us, not completely, but we also, what people don't know is that you see what physically the walls, you see what we do, but we also give to other organizations, other VAs, other veterans groups. We give to the Veterans Court, we, so we're kind of active behind the scenes on our, spreading our donations out. So we want to keep doing that. Right now, we have the luxury of doing both, and with Kroger not allowing us to be up there and getting our, and that was an easy way for us to make our money, it's going to put a little damper on us to being able to do what we want to do as far as contributing to more veteran causes. We, the Wall 7 is going to happen, but, and we also, all those names are going to come in, and we're going to have to have money for all those names coming in. So we're going to be starting fundraisers and just starting the buzz, and that's what this is, is starting the buzz, hey, you're going to be seeing us, we're going to really have to be hitting as far as getting the money and getting the wall up, so, and letting you guys know that. It should only take about, I don't know, a couple of weeks to get the wall installed, but it's going to take the parking. So we want to coordinate that, we don't want it doing it around Memorial Day, Veterans Day, or when voting is happening, so we want, so that way it'd be easy access.
Okay.
I do want to just say I have been contacted by Kroger's corporate office, a lady that's in charge of this, and we are going to be allowed to be up at the store for two days around Veterans Day and then two days again around Memorial Day. The two days around Veterans Day are going to be actually November the 4th and the 5th from 12 o'clock to 4:00 in the afternoon. We are not allowed to sell any of our wares or anything else. We can set our table up, it says Delhi Veterans on it, and alls we're allowed to do is pass out information. We can have a can out there for donations. We're not allowed ourself to accept any money if somebody wants to hand us a $5 bill or something like that, we can't accept it. We can say, if you wanted to make a donation, there's a can over there. We're not allowed to ask people for donations, which we never have done this. And beings we are, the Delhi veterans, and they know about what we did up the store, all the pictures and everything like that. There are other veterans organizations that they may or may not allow to come up there. I know some that they are, but we will have the first pick of dates. That was assured to me, and I picked the 4th and the 5th because that's close to the first of the month and Veterans Day. And I just wanted to reiterate that to everybody, that we have never, ever charged a veteran or his or her family to have that veteran's name put up on the wall. And we've done all this with donations. We have different boards throughout the years, and each one of those members of that board have worked their tail ends off. And this man right here, he's the workhorse of the whole organization. And I just wanted to let you know that, you know, but we will be getting some fundraisers together and things like that, and just like Jeff said, the bulk of our money did come from the items that we sell up there, and the reason that they're going to let us back up there is that they had a lot of phone calls wanting to know why the veterans haven't been up there.
So you're not permitted to do the cooking anymore and sell that stuff? You're just going to sit at a table? But they're going to allow the Girl Scouts to continue to sell their cookies?
Yes, I believe that's right.
Salvation Army up there.
So there's some inconsistency?
Christmas in July already
Right.
up there, but, you know, we're still going to keep up with what we do, you know. We made $6,000 to $8,000 a year up there at Kroger's. People were very, very generous in Delhi towards us, and when they knocked us off, I had an awful lot of people in the store, because I'm, they know me, and they wanted to know what was going on, you know, why we weren't allowed out there, so. It wasn't the store's decision.
Corporate.
It was a corporate
Corporate.
Corporate decision, you know, and they had to do what the heck, you know, whatever they were told to do.
Commander, have you thought of going to the Delhi Business Association and see if there could be an opportunity with another business, maybe to, you know, do the same type of promotion?
Well, we have been asked by REMKI that we could go over there, but for us to set everything else up and everything else, I think it was discussed by previous board that it wouldn't be, even be worth our while. We couldn't accept, we couldn't take in the donations and
What REMKI wanted was their token thing?
Yeah, they got a
And when we did that token thing, I think we only made like $40 or $50 by the time the program was done. So that would pay for one name on the wall, but it's not going to pay for overplenty, so. Another thing I'm going to check into is a GoFundMe
Absolutely.
Any type of money that we can get in would be
I don't know what their restrictions are, but certainly it's an option to look at.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we're not getting into something that's, so I want to
And we're going to do all we can to build the crowd for the November event, right?
Right. And November event is November 6th, Sunday at 1:00.
Sunday, November 6th, so everyone can mark your calendars now and save the date.
60 new names will be on the wall, so, and I guess you guys are going to be there to speak?
Plan to be there.
All donations are being accepted, so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Don.
Good job.
Okay, announcement of community events by Mr. Looby.
Bicentennial Celebration, the Delhi Historical Society Antiques Roadshow will be Saturday, September 10th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. will be at the Delhi Park Lodge at 5125 Foley Road. Delhi Historical Society Program, Cincinnati's most notorious cold case, will be Monday, September 12th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. will be at the Delhi Park Lodge at 5125 Foley Road. The Delhi Township Veterans Association General Meeting will be Tuesday, September 13th, from 7:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Delhi Community Senior Center. The Third Annual Delhi Fish Fest, hosted by the Delhi Township Parks and Recreation Department, will be Saturday, September 24th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Delhi Park,